We'll call to order tonight's Committee of the Whole for the Auburn City Council Meeting for December the 17th, 2024. The council should have the minutes from the December 3rd Committee of the Whole. If there are any additions or corrections, if not, is there a move to approve the minutes?
Say a move.
Second. Have a motion of second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes are carried forth. Questions on tonight's agenda for the city manager. Any questions related to tonight's agenda? Okay. City manager, is anything for us?
No.
Okay. Is there a move to adjourn the committee of the whole?
Say a move.
All right, we'll adjourn the committee of the whole. And for our audience, we'll get started right at 6 o'clock. Y'all feel free to visit amongst yourselves. We'll call to order tonight's Auburn City Council Meeting for December the 17th, 2024. We welcome everyone who has joined us live here this evening, as well as those that are listening on WANI and they're watching through our streaming services. With the roll call, Lindsey?
Adams.
Here.
Coblenz.
Here.
Dawson.
Here.
Griswold.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Witten.
Here.
Andrew.
Here. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Earlier tonight during the Committee of the Whole, there were no official actions that the council dealt with this evening. Under announcements, I do have a few things I'd like to walk through. I want to say thank you to the East Alabama Civic Corral and their leader, Dr. Dale Peterson, for an outstanding Christmas performance last week at First Baptist Church. This is a group of citizens who give their volunteer their time to put on these performances. There was obviously a lot of hours that was spent practicing, and I just appreciate all their efforts and work, and it was a great, great evening. I want to thank all of our industries. Recently, the Industrial Development Board had a holiday reception for those industries that provide great jobs in our community, and I want to say thank you to them again for what they do to provide those opportunities for people that work in Auburn, and we're very proud to have so many of them here. I want to say thank you and congratulations to the people who went through the Auburn Young Professionals Program, who had their end of the year soiree a couple of weeks ago. I just am impressed that these young people who have moved to Auburn to start life and start families want to find their way and find ideas as to what their future service can be in our community, and I'm thankful for their efforts and for the chamber putting on this program. Mr. Parsons, I want to remind you that the Polar Plunge is January the 18th, and this is your opportunity again to jump in the freezing cold water to raise money for a great charity in Special Olympics, and we remind everybody in our community to join us that morning. It just takes a little bit of bravery. It's really quick, but it goes to a great, great cause. Also, I want to remind Councilman Adams and Councilman Coblenz that their daddy-daughter date night is going on right now as far as signing up and getting your tickets for February 7th and 8th. This is an event that I certainly loved in my time as I get prepared to walk my daughter down the aisle. So I encourage you guys to get your tickets and enjoy that time with your daughters. I want to say thank you to the downtown merchants, as well as our public safety and public works for the Christmas parade this past Sunday. It was an excellent parade, well organized, and I appreciate everybody that pitched in. If I miss somebody on that list, please forgive me. And then finally, I just want to say Auburn, the city of Auburn, as well as Auburn's athletic department, Auburn University, and Auburn's football program had a tragic loss over the weekend as Chet Williams is no longer with us. He leaves behind a tremendous legacy of service and love to the Auburn football program and to many, many people in our community and to Chet and his family. We are praying for you, and we will miss you, and thank you for what you did on behalf of your faith and behalf of this community and behalf of the university. Anyone else? Yes, please. Sunny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Somebody suggested that I get out of the house today and smell the good, clean air and maybe get an attitude adjustment, so I drove around a little bit, and I noticed that some extensive progress is being made on the expansion of the Boykin Campus. I saw a lot of yellow equipment there, and they're moving the earth around, and also the recycle center, I believe. If I caught it out of the corner of my eye, I might believe it as well, and it's exciting to watch that. So my hat's off to those who are supervising that work and doing that work.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anyone else have an announcement? Okay. We'll move ahead with Auburn University Communications.
Hey, good afternoon. First, I just want to thank Mayor Anders for letting us have breakfast with him two Fridays ago. It was a great end to the semester. And then last week was finals. SGA kicked off the week with the annual War Dam Finals Cram Dinner at Edge Dining. This is an event that is sponsored by alumni Octavia Spencer. And then additionally, SGA helped fuel late-night study sessions by passing out donuts and orange juice at midnight every night in the library. Finals officially finished up on Friday, concluding another successful semester for Auburn. With that, we celebrated the graduation of 1,800 students on Saturday at Neville Arena. And then looking ahead, students will return to campus on January 13th and begin a new semester embracing the opportunities and challenges that will come with it. That's all for now. Thank you, War Eagle.
War Eagle. Thank you, Ellen. All right, this time, we'll move into Citizens Communications on items on tonight's agenda. Normally, after I read that, I say that there's an item, if there's items that have public hearings attached to that and you'd like to speak to the city council, please wait until that opportunity comes forward. I know many of you here tonight are interested in the topic of 9A1 and 9B1 related to the Jolly Property. With the annexation decision, there's no public hearing attached to that. So if you'd like to speak to the city council related to the annexation of that property, now would be the time to do that. If that were to pass later on in the agenda, then there will be a public hearing related to the rezoning attached to that. And I know if you haven't been to a council meeting, that's all very confusing, but we'll try to keep you in between the lines, okay? So now, if you'd like to speak to the city council about anything that's on our agenda that does not have a public hearing attached to it, now's your time to come forward. We ask that you come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes to speak to the city council. Good evening.
Melissa Willis, 191, Great Ellis Lane. Oh, my timer has started, so I will go ahead. This information may be more pertinent if the annexation goes through for the Jolly Properties, but I did want to go ahead and make my voice heard publicly to make sure that we get out some of these points that we may not have had a chance to before. So thank you for giving us time to speak. I realize you've all received my email and understand my sentiments, but I also want to voice some of the main topics of concern. Tonight, you are our stopgap for the rezoning request of the Jolly Property. To put in perspective how many of your constituents are affected by your decision, I would like to call on all of them who are concerned about this development and are in opposition to the proposed rezoning to please stand at this time. These are the people who will be impacted daily by the decision made tonight. Our area of town is rural and serene. It's the best of both worlds. We have the wide-open spaces and the feel of country living with the benefits of being located within the city limits. We're on the edges of North Auburn, an area where the development might eventually come, but is considered to be low priority for city planning. Collectively, we don't mind some housing and development coming our way, but the biggest issues we have are: number one, when the developers are able to skirt the current rules of the area by attempting a rezoning; number two, when the developers are presenting the rezoning request as if they have the best interest of the current residents in mind, rather than acknowledging the fact that the rezoning would allow them the most dollars for their investment. Developing a smaller amount of land with smaller lot sizes increases their profit margin while disrupting that rural feel of the area for the rest of us. The engineers stated at the Planning Commission meeting that their goal was to provide conservation to an area and protect the streams. We already have conservation to that area with untouched streams traveling through various properties there. We currently have conservation of natural areas while maintaining the character of the landscape. What a COD rezoning actually offers them is a chance to avoid development of parts of the parcel that would be expensive due to rock and other costs, and stick to the development on a more buildable land with single-acre lots, therefore increasing their profit. The potential of a large development coming to the area with limited infrastructure, including limited water supply and pressure, limited school buses and routes, and small county roads with no planned traffic study to address nearby intersections despite the predicted increase of 590 daily vehicle passes. While the Planning Commission acknowledged these issues at our meeting, there were no plans to address any of them prior to the potential development and only after the fact, after the problem was realized. Lastly, the Planning Commission surmised the developer's lot count would be 59 with single-acre or three-acre lots. Therefore, it should not make much of a difference to the neighbors. Yes, 59 lots is a large burst of growth in our small area, no matter the lot size, but I ask you to try and visualize how awful this would look and how dense it would look having a single-acre lot squeezed into an area that is currently zoned rural. How out of place would that be? Almost finished it up. Ultimately, the Planning Commission was hoping the developer would work with the neighbors on and our request regarding buffers and spreading the lots out. So it seems to me that this all comes down to trust. Are we to trust that an out-of-town developer will have our best interests at heart in the city of Auburn, or would it seem more logical for the developer to ensure his business is profitable? I believe we all recently learned the hard way with the Eagle debacle that not all developers can be trusted, and some are bad actors. Now, please let us have faith and trust in you to make the right decision for your constituents and vote against the rezoning of the Jolly Property. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Who would be next?
Mayor, we're going to adjust the podium real quickly, so hold on just a second.
Okay.
It got raised.
Hold on just one second.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry about that. So, there we go. Sorry about that.
Take it back up.
That's good. Right. No, it's fine, but you can then see somebody's face for sure. Yep, there we go.
Hi, all. My name's Tamar Kent. I live at 162 Great Ellis Lane in Auburn. And I previously sent you a four-page letter outlining just a handful of the concerns I have with the currently proposed development of the Jolly Lot. I'm not going to belabor those points here now, but what I want to do is make some overarching comments about the implication of this currently proposed development. So I endorse all of the comments that Melissa just made, but I think there are some other issues, too. First, I want to make available to you a petition, some signatures from an online petition we started. There are 126 Auburn or Auburn-affiliated signatures on this document. I'll send you the official link after this meeting. And to me, that indicates that opposition to this kind of rezoning and development is far wider than our neighborhood alone, because everybody in a rurally zoned land in or adjacent to Auburn recognizes that their rural tranquility will be vulnerable to exploitation by developers if this kind of annexation and COD rezoning goes through. And that is a big and overarching concern. I really don't think you'd be seeing this kind of turnout, this kind of opposition to a simple annexation request. It is the way this annexation is being done with the conservation overlay. That proposed conservation overlay by Horton has opened the eyes of your voters to what appears to be a potential dual track or two sets of rules for developing rural land. One is the three-acre minimum that individual property owners and homeowners have to adhere to when they're developing their homes. And then there is this legal loophole that is made available to developers who don't want to play by those rules, who want to skirt those rules and create high-density developments in a low-density rural area. And it's that sense of unfairness and lack of fair play that's at stake here that is creating this kind of reaction. And I think you all are the stopgap to making sure that there is fair play. I'm a city girl from Boston. My husband's a rural guy. He dragged me down here, and on my drive down from Boston, I passed a lot of towns with interesting names, and one of them was like Fair Play. There's an actual town named Fair Play. But we don't need to name our town Fair Play. We just have to have fair play and an equal playing field for homeowners and developers. I personally support the annexation of the Jolly Property into Auburn because I believe that that is the best way to ensure safe and responsible development of that land that continues to adhere to the rural nature that we prize out there. Melissa touched a little bit on trust, and I have a more like economic and business-oriented view of trust, but homeowners have made a lot of investment into their homes in that area and in everybody, frankly. But in the rural zoned areas, we made big investments. I know for me, it was the biggest investment I made in my life in buying that home out on Great Ellis Lane. And we've made a bunch of enhancements since we've come there, and we did that with the trust that the regulations in operation when we made those decisions would be adhered to by all. And I think that's a very important principle. If we want to see thriving economic development or homeowners who continue to take pride and invest in their house, even though the bank may own it, you know, that's something where we need stable and consistently followed rules for our city. And I think I'll stop there because I could then go into a lot more comments, but that's it from me for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, one more time, we're going to put the podium in the middle.
Okay.
It's meant for ADA reasons. It can raise in either direction. We probably, we need a middle ground here. Well, I'll steer it justice way. Fixes it. There we go.
Who'll be next?
That's good. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Keith Eubanks, and I also live at 162 Great Ellis Lane. My comments will be a little bit shorter, but I want to express my opposition to the, mostly the change in zoning. And I'd like to make a couple of comments about that. First, we have a home and a barn and a chicken house and a smokehouse on six acres. So I believe our home fits within the rural characteristics of the land north of 280. And when we purchased that home, our expectation was that that, the rules that our house was built upon, will be in place for quite a few years. And personally, I'd like to see that be in place for at least another decade or two. I would think that the development south of 280 could cover the dense development. The second comment I want to make is about the conservation area. Right now, we have lots of undeveloped land north of 280. There's a lot of timberland, a lot of pasture land, that, you know, thousands of acres in Lee County that, some of it in Auburn and some of it not in Auburn. What we don't have north of 280 is dense development. And to me, making the trade on a piece of property that, south of 280, might be a good trade to get developers to set aside part of the property for conservation land to build dense housing. But north of 280, that seems a pretty bad trade to me because we have ample green space. What we don't have is large developments with small lots, and that will fundamentally change the character of the area. And I would request that we keep that character for at least a few more decades. One day, Auburn will expand beyond, and I'm sure that will change, but for the foreseeable future, I would make that request. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Who'll be next?
Evening. Dave Patrick, 7550 Stonewall Road. My address is actually Opelika, but I'm within the city limits. I am also opposed to rezoning. I don't think that plan that they presented during the Planning Commission is in the spirit of the rural area, as everybody's already spoke to. I want to voice one other concern that I have, and that is water. We do have a serious water problem in that area, and the density that we're seeing on the other side of 280, the south side of 280, is going to cause us problems. We all rely on a pump for our water. I've lived there for about 10 years, and I'm going to say that at least five times, we have lost water, not power, power and water. I believe maybe a moratorium on home building should be considered until that water tower is completed. It is a safety issue. If there was a fire or any type of that information would happen. Plus, when you lose water pressure, there is a risk of creating a vacuum and sucking groundwater into the water supply. As I said, we live pretty close to High Point of Auburn, and that pump, as I said, it has failed at least five times in my memory. About every other year, we experience a water loss due to a power failure or a pump failure or whatever the case may be. I understand that there is some type of plan for a water tower at the new facility there. I think that really needs to go in before we really, really start thinking about more housing in that general area. Thank you.
Thank you. Who'll be next? Okay, we'll move ahead. City manager. City manager's communications.
Mayor, under City Manager's Communications, your packets had gone out late Friday afternoon, and we received a resignation from Jim Buston, our former city manager, to the Industrial Development Board. He has permanently moved to Wyoming and must resign his seat on the industrial board. So therefore, we're going to announce this again at our first January meeting, but I'm going to announce it tonight so we can get it posted. There's one vacancy on the Industrial Development Board for an unexpired term that will begin upon appointment and end October 9th, 2028. The appointment will be made at the February 4th City Council meeting. Due to the holidays, your rules state a four-week minimum announcement, but because we're late with this announcement, it wasn't published with the agenda. I'm going to give it till that first meeting in February, just to give people ample time to apply.
Okay. Thank you. All right, the consent agenda.
All right, our first item of business is the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Okay. Is there a move to approve the consent agenda?
Say a move.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Any follow-up questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the consent agenda has passed. Ordinances.
Under ordinances this evening, item 9A1 is a request to annex approximately 178 acres of property known as the Jolly Property located north of Highway 280 and east of Stonewall Road. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its November 14th meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Any follow-up questions, comments? All in favor, please A motion is second. Anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Hearing none, are there any comments or questions?
I have a few, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
Not too many questions, but comments. I do respect the outpouring of opposition on this application. I think it's important to know that the planning staff has prioritized this annexation as low. This is fairly, in my tenure on this council, it's a real, it's a new measurement of how we look at growth in Auburn. And we really need to give this party measurement some teeth. And so I don't see the benefit or the value of annexing this property at this time in that area because of some of the reasons we've heard this evening and also because of the over 45 emails that we've received listing out the various reasons why this would be a bad decision for the city of Auburn. So for those reasons, I would not support an annexation at this time.
Anyone else have a comment or question from the dice? Yes, Mr. Griswold.
Yes, I'd just like to make sure everybody is fully aware that should this item be voted down, the property is still in the county and that we have very limited control over what happens in the county. Now, we do have, I say we, I'm talking about the city, subdivision oversight within our planning jurisdiction. So if another subdivision wants to come in, that has to come back to the city. But if somebody wants to come in there and put something that's currently allowed, that's a risk you take. But I have to support Councilwoman Witten's concerns. Even though it is, would be annexed as rural, y'all have pointed out that probably about half of it is really developable. And so that means that we're looking at, oh, what? 59, potentially 59 septic tank systems on about 83 acres. So that just doesn't work out right for me. So I can't support this from a health, safety, and welfare perspective.
Anyone else? Anyone else have a comment? Yes, sir, Mr. Moore.
Is there anyone here that would constitute the developer who could speak on the other side of this issue?
That's at the pleasure of the council. It's if you have questions, there's no public hearing, but that's at the pleasure of the majority of the council.
Well, my question, I'll just throw it out there, and then you see if it's worth bringing anybody to the podium. But does this developer have any use for the property if not annexed? And if so, what would that use be?
One of the things, and I'll double-check with our Planning Director before we do that, is depending on how you choose to act tonight, if the property is not annexed, we do not have a regulation in our Planning Commission rules or any other annexation policy about somebody asking again to annex it two months from now. So you can certainly, that's up to the council if you want to ask the applicant questions. But I also, Planning Commission has some specific rules about rezonings and other things, but they do not have a rule about rehearing an annexation.
Are you asking the council, would they, would the council like to hear?
Yes. Anybody else like to hear the answer to that question?
Sure, I would.
Does the developer have a representative here?
Good evening. My name is Chris Franks with D.R. Horton. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, we'll start with you, Mr. Moore, and we'll repeat your question.
Yes, I would. Do you have, how do you feel about annexation versus developing the property as it is?
Well, I think the, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we still have the right to develop it with a rural designation, whether you annex it or not. We haven't, we haven't explored what we'll do. But yeah, we've got it under contract, and we would like to, we would like to develop it as a residential. That's the use we, you know, we're a home builder, so.
Would you develop it if it were not annexed? I guess.
Possibly.
Possibly.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
May I think the Planning Director could clarify one other thing that you may have a question about? If you're not in the city limits, you cannot avail yourselves of the conservation overlay district regulations, correct?
Yeah, no.
So, meaning, I don't want to confuse the matter because there are watershed reasons that conservation overlay districts are looked at. However, not in the city limits, obviously, the zoning ordinance does not apply, so.
Anybody else have a question or a comment?
If we annex it in, it comes in as rural, right?
It does.
Have to have three-acre lots to do anything.
Three-acre lots, yeah.
If, and Beth Mike can tell me what this, so what? We don't annex it, and we have no control over it.
But you don't have that control today and haven't for the years leading up to today.
But what I'm saying is if we vote to annex it in, but don't vote for the change in the way it's designated, what is there, bottom line is, wouldn't we have more control over it if we annex it in?
You have subdivision and zoning authority. You have subdivision authority if you don't annex it. You have subdivision and zoning authority if you do. But what you do get is 59 houses potential, kind of in either way, assuming to Councilman Griswold's point, the whole thing could be developed. But you do get 59 households that could put in our schools. We have garbage pickup, we have water impact, we have other things. So that's up to the council.
Thank you.
Yeah, may I respond to that? Yeah, from my lens, just hearing, you know, the busing situation for schools is very difficult as it is. When we cross over 280 on the north side of the city, there's a lot of resources that we need to start working towards building up. And right now, they're just not there. The water situation is one that gives me pause. School busing, the additional strain on our services as it is within the city. I just personally believe that this is not the appropriate time to annex that property. And that, again, I'm going to lean on the fact that we need to give credence to the annexation priority of it being a low priority. And that, I believe, could we answer that question as to why we feel this is a low priority?
We'll have our Planning Director speak to that.
Great question. So there are several factors, about two dozen, so I'll go through them. So it's utility availability, utility availability, considering rural water authority, utility capacity. So it's kind of directly speaking to water availability, water pressure. And so like the general mentioned about the fire suppression and putting houses out, that is one of the comments, and I think that's one of the things that we intend to highlight more. And so one of those comments that Public Safety puts forward is that this might affect insurance rates. And what that means actually is that if the fire department does come to your house and there isn't enough water pressure to fight the fire, they may just have to watch your house burn down. And so we don't know if that's something that we've actually articulated by that comment, but that is what that comment means. So from a road network capacity, enclaves, topography, flood zone, school capacity, county and city, fire protection, current land use, percentage of vacant lots, Opelika city limits, Opelika growth city limits, Low Capocha city limits. And so, as I said, so it's a confluence of factors that go into what influences the priority for annexation. So some of these were designated high, some of them were designated medium, some of them were designated low. One of the bigger things that we talked about with this property is the utility availability, the capacity, and then how that translates to fire protection. And then also kind of looking at the adjoining communities and their capacity to serve from a utility standpoint, and then also where their city boundaries go.
Thank you. Could we all say, since we have Mr. Carson here, hear about the water impacts?
Absolutely.
Eric.
Obviously, people are concerned about the booster station that's out there. It does go down from time to time. It's not that often, and it's pretty reliable. From a fire protection standpoint, I do believe the pump station can meet fire demands. With the tower there, it would definitely be more available and steady, the pressure. The mains out there are plenty big enough to supply that. One thing I would like to point out is if it is not annexed into the city, they would not be eligible to be on Auburn water, so.
So therefore, Eric, where would the water supply come from?
Probably well water.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
If we don't annex it in, I mean, I'm going back, probably repetitive, but I want to make sure I'm clear on this. They can put anything they want to put in there.
Correct, as they can today, yeah.
That's my, I think Kelly voiced those concerns. If we annex it in, then we control if they enroll or go into this other deal where you put 59 homes in, all right?
You can put 59 homes either way, assuming, to Councilman Griswold's point, that it was all, that you can fit them with three-acre lots. You get the same amount of homes in or out of the city limits, they can do that today.
They can't subdivide in less than three-acre lots.
Correct. So the density either way remains the same. And I didn't say it was buildable at three-acre lots for everything. That's something for the developer to determine. But the density doesn't exceed the rural density established either way.
Yes, sir.
Do we have an estimate of when the new water tower will come online?
Something, it's in the CIP, I'll have Eric speak to that as well.
That's correct. We have a design going to the Water Board hopefully next month to start the design of the tank and hope to have it online in the next 18 to 24 months.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Lindsey with the roll call?
Parsons?
No.
Taylor?
No.
Witten?
No.
Adams?
No.
O'Blunt?
No.
Dawson?
No, ma'am.
Griswold?
No, ma'am.
Mormon?
No, ma'am.
Anders?
No.
Item failed.
So that item failed, Mayor. Item 9B1, when we get there, will not be considered because it can't be.
So the council, so just to repeat what the City Manager said, so the council will not be considering item 9B1, okay?
I'll cover that again when we get there. Item 9A2 is a request to annex approximately 43.8 acres of property known as the Weeks' Property located at 2303 Lee Road 10, also known as Beehive Road. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its November 14 meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask unanimous consent.
Second.
We have a motion is second. Anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing and hearing none, are there any discussion or questions? Okay, Lindsey with the roll call?
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
O'Blunt?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
For item 9B1, let the record reflect that this item has to be de facto withdrawn because the property was not annexed and cannot be considered for zoning. Item 9B2 is a request to rezone approximately 43.8 acres of property known as the Weeks' Property from rural to industrial located at 2303 Lee Road 10, also known as Beehive Road. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its November 14 meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary, and a public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask unanimous consent.
Second.
All right, we have a motion is second. This time, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the City Council on this topic, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes to speak to the council. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to know, does the IDB have plans for this property already? Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, Lindsey with the roll call?
Witten?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
O'Blunt?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 9C declares property located at 1284 Mall Parkway surplus and authorizes the sale to Allen Investments LLC for the appraised value of $350,000. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
We have a motion is second. Anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Hearing none, any comments or questions? Okay, Lindsey with the roll call?
Adams?
Yes.
O'Blunt?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries.
Resolutions.
Under resolutions, item 10A authorizes text amendments and future land use map changes to Comp Plan 2030 as part of a five-year update. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this update at its November 14 meeting. A public hearing is required.
I move to postpone to the second meeting in January, which is January the 21st.
Second.
Have a motion is second to postpone January 21st. Just simply, there's a lot to this, there's a lot of information here, there's a lot of considerations for the council. We have had this information for a very short period of time. This will give us an opportunity to have a work session in early 2025 and fully understand all the decisions and all the changes that would occur through this. Any other comments or questions?
This would move at one month, you say?
Yeah, second meeting in January, 21st, right?
Absolutely, and we expected that you would need some time to digest, and we'll gather Planning Commission with you when you want to study this in early January.
And there will be an opportunity for public comment at that time.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, because you actually didn't move in second for this. It's not fully on the table, you're just postponing, and you can have a full public hearing when it comes back up.
And certainly, we encourage the public to make themselves avail of the information that's in here about this and to share your comments with staff and your council representatives as we get past the holidays. Okay? All right, do I need to take a vote on that, don't I need?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so all in favor, postpone it January 21st, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
Item 10B1 is a conditional use request for a three-unit multi-unit development located at 708 Harper Avenue in the Corridor Redevelopment District zoning east, sorry, Corridor Redevelopment East zoning district. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its December 12 meeting. A public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the motion, ask for unanimous consent.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second. All right, we have a motion is second. Any comments or questions? Yes.
A couple, maybe. There's a triplex that's under construction on Glen Avenue, East Glen. And in my mind's eye, this is what it's going to look like, similar to this. Is there any confirmation or?
I'll have the Planning Director speak to it. I think this one's a little more perpendicular.
Yes, so, yeah, yeah, yeah. So the one on Glen, that one is parallel with the road, like they're street-facing. The other one is going to go, it's going to be perpendicular and go back into the lot. And so it's going to be more at an angle. So that's why there's a comment that there needs to be a front door facing Harper instead of kind of the other one. So there's multiple different variations. So I mean, you can have the one that's three stories, that's like the one on Harper. You have the one that's like three horizontal ones, it kind of looks like row homes, that's on Glen. And then you can also have this one where it's three homes, but they go back into the lot instead of kind of running alongside the road.
The reason I ask that is because they all had to have entrances that face Harper, is that correct?
Yes.
And how can that be if it's perpendicular?
No, 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 no. So the building, so the building that does, I guess the unit that does face the road needs to have one, needs to have a door that faces the road. The other ones will not because they're not facing the road.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor, please say.
Mayor, you needed to open the public hearing.
Oh, I am so sorry, okay.
We had questions before the public hearing.
I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the City Council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes to speak to the council. I apologize. Anyone? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Any follow-up questions, comments? Yes.
I'm embarrassed to even bring this up, but I was raised on this street. It's a very emotional thing for me. This street was half dirt when I was there, and I remember before those houses were there. And now they're going to be torn down. So time marches on in Auburn, Alabama, and we have to embrace change. So this is that moment for me, and I'm okay with it, I think. But it is a big deal. And I know a lot of people feel the same way I do about growth in Auburn. But I'm old enough so that I can say those houses are quite old. So I suppose they had to come down. And Comp Plan 2030 suggests that this is our purposeful idea of growth in this area. So it meant a lot, this Comp Plan. It guides the growth of Auburn, and we'll be taking a careful look at that next time we come together, I guess. Well, a month from now. But I'm okay, I'm on board with it. I just have to, I put a tear there, but I'm all right now, thanks. Thanks for indulging me.
Anyone else? Anybody else on the council live there growing up?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I am.
All right, we have a motion is second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say aye. No? All right, motion carries.
Item 10B2 is a conditional use request for a three-unit multi-unit development Item 10B2 is a conditional use request for a six-unit multi-unit development known as the Boulevard Phase 8 located at the terminus of Gidden Street in the medium-density residential district zoning district. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its December 12th meeting. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion is second. This time I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes to speak to the council. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? Okay, we have a motion is second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10B3 is a request for conditional use approval of various commercial support uses at Contractor Storage Yard, Mini Warehouse and Warehouse, known as the Gamble Winter New Office, to be located at 375 West Fetters Boulevard in the Comprehensive Development District zoning district. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its December 12th meeting. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion is second. This time I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10C1 authorizes a contract with Headley Construction Corporation for the Sanford Avenue Tennis and Pickleball Court renovation project in the amount of $305,000.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion is second. Any comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10C2 authorizes a contract with JLD Enterprises LLC for the Gay Street Streetscape project in the amount of $726,477.52.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion is second. Any comments or questions? Yes, sir.
Yes, I asked a question to the city manager earlier. The actual site plan shows that some of this renovation has been done on the church property. And so I did ask that question, clarify. The church will handle whatever's on their property, and the city will handle what's on our property. Just, just so everybody's aware of that separation there.
Thank you.
Absolutely, he's referring to the, kind of the very front portion of, of the church. There's other places that we have in Easeman, and I sent you a revised map today and appreciate the question. The Presbyterian Church, since Publix has, was built, has long been willing to partner on this project where we're delivering a 10-foot sidewalk on Gay Street, and it tapers down as you round the corner on Thatch to an 8-foot. If you walk out there, it's pretty narrow, and there's a daunting retaining wall right now that will be coming down. It'll be actually, it's a win-win for both of us. And so we're also trying to get this project done between Christmas and Easter.
Okay.
See what happens.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions?
The interim city engineer is not very confident about that. Look at her, she says, has your best.
Put on her.
That's right. No pressure.
All right, good. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10C3 authorizes a three-year contract with Samsara Incorporated for the fleet management software renewal in a total amount of $886,858.20. There's also a two, two-year renewal option that can be exercised under the same terms and conditions.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion is second. Any comments or questions from the dice? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10C4 authorizes a three-year contract with SHI International Corp. for the Microsoft Enterprise Agreement renewal with an annual installment price of $366,584.78.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion is second. Any comments, questions from the council?